The council agenda for Tuesday, June the third, two thousand and twenty five has presented. Thank you.
Any discussion? Saying none, all those in favor. It's carried unanimously. We'll deal with the minutes over May thirteenth meeting, Councillor Holsman.
Yes, good morning, everyone. I did not find any errors on the minutes, so I would move the minutes from May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty five as presented.
Our minutes were good. Those ones were all corrected that we've seen?
Yes.
Perfect. All those in favor? It's carried unanimously. Continuing on to reports. Item number five point one, bylaw number one thousand nine slash twenty five dash A, amendment to Springbrook Offsite Levis Bylaw. Good morning.
Good morning.
Ms. McLaughlin.
Yes, you got it. Thank you. Good morning. This presentation is to consider granting first reading to bylaw number one thousand and nine slash twenty twenty five dash A, which is a bylaw to amend the Springbrook Offsite Levis Bylaw to amend Schedule A. So this bylaw has come out based on a two thousand and twenty one Springbrook Infrastructure Study that was completed, and the amendments are based on the recommendations and associated costs with that two thousand and twenty one study. So Red Deer County engaged tagish engineering to update the existing offsite levees for the hamlet of Springbrook. The current structure is based on a bylaw which was adopted in two thousand and seventeen. So what was found is that generally construction costs have increased since two thousand and seventeen, and one of the largest things that was actually removed from the offsite levy bylaw was the funding towards airport drive and airport way. So that was provincially funded, so that can be removed from the offsite levy bylaws as a requirement for payment. So with the proposed levees, they do range between seventy three thousand and one hundred and fourteen thousand per hectare depending upon the location in Springbrook. I did create a table which shows a little bit of the differences between two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and twenty four. However, it isn't a hundred percent reflective because the offsite levy benefiting areas, so specifically the sanitary benefiting areas have changed in regards to how much land was included in each of them. So as mentioned, the most significant was the decrease to the transportation network, and administrative fees went down as well. And then we do have, if there's technical questions or more related questions and some maps in regards to what those benefiting areas are, I do have them later in the presentation if you need that information. In regards to an offsite levy bylaw, the proposed amendments will be referred to internal and external agencies as well as affected landowners for comments and concerns. We will follow section six forty eight point three of the Municipal Government Act, which is to act in good faith and provide stakeholders with the ability to provide input on an ongoing basis. So there's about ten to fifteen landowners who have not developed out their land who would be most affected by the changes to the offsite levy bylaw. So we'll ensure to consult with them over the coming months and bring that information back to council in September. There is also a sixty day petition period, so that's why this will not come back to you until September. And so there is that length of time when this will potentially get approved. So we are recommending that you grant first reading to bylaw one thousand and nine slash twenty twenty five to amend the Springbrook Offsite Levy Bylaw. And there is an error in the report under section five, which says to set a public hearing for July twenty second. So there was just one spot where that got missed. That is not, that would not happen. We do not need to hold a public hearing for an offsite levy bylaw. We just need to do consultation and bring that information back to council. So that, the recommendation is just for first reading today. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. You have any questions, Councillor Kenneth?
I noticed in the report in several places where they were talking about estimated costs, but it was projects that were completed in like twenty two, twenty three and such. Those costs, are they still able to be changed? Or are they set in stone now that projects have been completed and paid out?
Ms. Miller?
So with respect to that, I hope that I am understanding the question correctly. With the offsite levees, even though the project's completed, it was still in the original offsite levy bylaw. Typically, an offsite levy will be in a deficit, and we will collect for, for that project. So it's, it's intended to cover projects for the overall growth of the area and anything that's offsite work, anything that only benefits a developer, that would be development pays model. So there are projects, we did have to provide tagish with all of the exact costs once we completed a, a project and they factor it all into that offsite levy bylaw.
Okay. So it's just the offsite portion that's, that would still be owing at some point when a development happens?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Ramsey?
Sure, thanks, Mayor Wood. I'm just, just curious. With, with the end result from what Tagish did, are, is that comparable to other, some of our other areas for, I'm, I'm just do, I, I don't think we want to price ourselves out of being able to develop. So I'm just curious, is that fair or comparable to our other areas?
So I didn't take the opportunity to do a comparison chart. That's something that we could certainly provide for council when we bring this back for second reading. It will be substantially lower than places like Gasoline Alley, but it will be higher than any place that only has a transportation levy. Let's say see any trail that's only transportation levy. This does have sanitary, water, transportation. It does factor in any improvements that need to occur in the future. And in general, as Beth had indicated, the, the offsite levy as a whole has in generally gone down, but our costs have gone up. So it, it, it doesn't make a huge impact on, on what's, compared to what's there in place right now.
Thank you.
Councillor Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Wood. Just a couple of questions. So is this fairly typical? We're in the range of typical urban development because that's what this is. We're, we're, we're in line with that.
Ms. Miller?
Yeah, I don't believe that we're off base here. I think it's either it's pretty typical or it's, it's much lower.
Thank you, Director Miller. And my other question is, so what does the public consultation look like?
Ms. McLaughlin?
We're going to refer to all the undeveloped landowners and send them a letter and then discuss further consultation. So if they want to come in and meet with us specifically to talk about specifics of the changes to the offsite levy bylaw, then we would invite them to do that. As I mentioned, there's only about ten to thirteen, I think, landowners who have undeveloped land. We already know that some of them are aware that these changes are coming as they've been talking to us about projects. We've been informing them that, just so you know, that there is an offsite levy bylaw amendment coming and what that looks like. So that would be our typical process because we are, we do have a small targeted audience on this one compared to other areas which much, which might have many more landowners that need to be consulted.
Councillor Holsman?
No, I, you answered my questions. I was interested in the comparisons and the answer was there with Gasoline Alley. Thank you.
Okay, Councillor De Palm will, will, will ask last, but I will, I'll make the motion, but I will, as we come around, just ask a question on how the process works. So we're in the process right now of understanding that there are multiple developers that may be in the process of developing. If they should come in today and make their payment for the offsite levees that are current today, and so you only pay them once if I'm, if I'm correct or not, can they do so?
Yes, they can come in and pay today, and they would be paying based on the bylaw that is in place as of today.
Thank you. Councillor De Palm?
Thanks for the report and all the information. I just want, I guess, clarification. It's only for development land. It's not going to affect any residential people that are already there, right?
So we can only collect offsite levees once unless it's for a new item. And any lands that are already developed out, and let's say the residential subdivision for Malibu communities, those have already been paid.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that it was clarified. Okay, I can definitely give you a motion.
Looking for a motion.
Okay, I would grant first reading to bylaw number one zero zero nine slash twenty twenty five dash A, and looking forward to the input and what people have to say.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor for first reading by Councillor De Palm. Is there any discussion at this time? Saying none, I'm looking for the call of question. All those in favor? It's carried unanimously. Thank you. Okay, continuing on to item number five point two, Gasoline Alley Hamlet Boundary Adjustment and Franchise Agreement Amendment. Let's see if I get the right one up onto my screen here. So I'm ready. Okay. Go ahead.
Good morning, everyone. This is to, to consider amending the hamlet of Gasoline Alley's boundaries and the corresponding franchise agreement municipal service area. The proposed boundary amendment area is located within the Gasoline Alley West Major Area Structure Plan. It is also within the IDP for the city of Red Deer and Red Deer County, and it's entirely within the county's growth area. Section fifty nine of the Municipal Government Act allows council of a municipal district to designate an unincorporated community located within its boundaries to be a hamlet, subject to conditions or criterias which the Gasoline Alley West currently meets. This section also allows council to amend the boundaries of a hamlet. A section of Gasoline Alley West was designated as a hamlet of Gasoline Alley in two thousand and eighteen. In two thousand and twenty four, administration received a request from a developer to incorporate additional lands into the hamlet of Gasoline Alley. The purpose of this request is to expand the Atco franchise agreement municipal service area. In two thousand and twenty, council authorized mayor and county manager to grant a franchise agreement with Atco Gaz to deliver natural gas to customers within the hamlet of Gasoline Alley. This was done by bylaw two thousand and eighteen slash thirty five. An amendment to this bylaw is required to change the municipal service area map to reflect the boundary amendment. Developers for lands outside of a franchise agreement are required to pay a rural infrastructure, infrastructure cost as opposed to an urban cost, which extending the gas infrastructure for a new development. Urban and rural infrastructure costs are quite vastly dif- different, making it financially impacting to developers that are outside of a franchise agreement. To expand the franchise agreement municipal service area, the area must first be in a designated urban community. In the future, an expanded franchise agreement municipal service area would reduce that infrastructure cost to developers, and a franchise fee would be applied to the natural gas customer's monthly bill. The average monthly franchise fee for an average residential customer is approximately nine dollars and thirty nine cents, including linear taxes. The franchise fee is based on distribution charges. No change to the franchise fee rate rider percentage is being made as part of this boundary amendment. The proposed amendment to the hamlet boundary was referred to internal and external stakeholders as well as any landowners that would be in the affected area to be incorporated on April seventeenth of this year. To date, we have received no concerns. As per the Municipal Government Act clause four five three, before a franchise agreement can be amended, it must be advertised and approved by the AUC following first reading to the bylaw, which would be bylaw one zero one one slash twenty twenty five A. Should council approve first reading, the application requests would be sent to AUC for review. The franchise boundary agreement would be advertised in accordance with the act. Second and third readings to the bylaw one zero one one slash twenty twenty five A cannot be considered until AUC approval has been granted. Recommendation would be that administration recommends council approve the proposed amendment to the hamlet of Gasoline Alley's boundaries by way of council resolution as per Schedule A of the report, which is shown on the side there, and to grant first reading to bylaw one zero one one slash twenty twenty five A, a bylaw to amend bylaw two thousand and eighteen slash thirty five to increase the franchise agreement municipal service area as per Schedule A of the report.
Thank you for your report. We'll have questions prior to a motion, starting with Councillor Ramsey.
Yes, I'm just curious, will there be any public hearing for the boundary adjustment?
No, as it will be done by resolution.
Okay. And, and so is there any impact on the, the mobile home park? Or would they, they all be on propane there?
We did refer it out to everybody within the mobile home park, and we did not receive any letters of concern.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Moore?
I, I just want to phrase this as a question. So in the long run, this boundary change will make utilities cheaper for, for our residents.
As per your question, it is for the developers. It has to do when they bring the infrastructure in. It'll make it cheaper for them, and most of the lands are currently undeveloped.
Yes, and would the developer, if not pass that on to the buyer of the homes? So this is a better deal for them.
Yes, yes, it does in the long run.
That's where I was going. Thank you.
Councillor. Okay, no questions. Any questions, Councillor Kenneth? Questions and a motion to?
Yeah, start with the questions. Looking at the map, how come South of McKenzie, there's a lot of development there? Why isn't that included in this?
At the time of the request, that was not included. It could be contemplated later. It's, that's an area that's already developed out at this time.
Okay. And my other question. The Oakwood, let me get this right, Oakwood Estates, that's sectioned out. Is that because it's fully developed there?
So that particular area is not within the area structure plan, and we followed that boundary, and it's already developed out. So it's, it's not within that ASP is why it's not included.
Okay. And in your report, you said you sent out the notice to landowners. Does that include the mobile home park people? Because they aren't the landowners.
Correct. Everybody in the mobile home park actually has a title, and so anybody with a title received a letter.
Because aren't they renting there, the land?
They still have a title.
Ms. Moore?
Yeah, so when we do a referral to them, we do have the landowner, but we also have each individual mobile homeowner listed in our, in our GIS. So when it comes up, it comes up with, I don't even know how many are in there, hundreds of addresses. And so we do have that information. That's who was referred to. If they rent off of somebody who owns a mobile home in there, we can't control that. It will go to the mobile homeowner.
Okay, so there would be notice to each owner, not just to the landowner of the park?
So let's say we're going to need probably two motions. One's, one's a first reading and one's, and one's a, and so we start with the first one?
Yeah. So I am going to move an amended area on the first motion. Grant first reading of bylaw ten eleven slash twenty twenty five dash A, bylaw to amend bylaw two thousand and eighteen slash thirty five to increase the franchise agreement municipal service area as per Schedule A with an amendment to Schedule A removing the Wascasou. Just want to get this, removing the Wascasou Mobile Home Park from the hamlet area. The reason I say this is there is no benefit to these people. The place has been fully developed. This would be eighteen thousand dollars a year based on the nine dollars. It's not like they need a community center. They already have one. They have sidewalks. They have everything in their community. This would be an undue hardship on what is really reasonable income living area. You know, nine dollars per month per home, that's a lot of money for a hundred and sixty five plus minus mobile homes. So my amendment is to remove that area out of the development, just like Oakwood Estates was removed out. Thank you.
Okay, so, so we have a, we have a motion on the floor and, and typically we start with our comments, but this may create some questions. And, and I, and I, I guess, I guess, I'll just ask the question straight off the bat. What, what will this change? What will this change? For your plan that you've already given us, because this seems, I hate making changes on the fly. So can you help us administration with what, what we're hearing?
So I'll start, and then I think, uh, CA, or Assistant CA Dietrich would like to comment as well. With respect to the amount that is shown, the nine dollars per month, we had to advertise the average to date, so that average is based on the homes in Liberty Landing. It wouldn't necessarily be based on the mobile homes. I know we did consult because we understood that when we looked at this area, we want to make sure that we're taking into consideration anyone who's impacted. And so we did consult with the owner of the mobile home park, who saw the benefit to proceeding with this. Now with removing it, I'll maybe let Dave chime in there, but the map would have to be amended to, to remove it out from it, and we wouldn't be collecting from those, whether it's three dollars a month or whatnot. We have been collecting franchise fees as another tool to, to collect, to basically raise money, let's say for a fire hall or something like that, but I'll, I'll hand it over to Dave.
Mr. Dietrich?
Thank you, Mayor Wood and council. I think it's just a revenue tool. Obviously, administration, when we're creating the, the hamlet, it was all about creating a full, full-service community, water, sewer, pave roads, trails, fiber optics. And ultimately, we know there will be urban needs. There will be a fire hall need, absolutely. There will be recreation facility need, and when the new school's built, I'm sure there'll be a library or a fieldhouse request of Red Deer County. We're looking at trying to develop, you know, revenue tools that we can put into the bank and have these people funded. Now, I do understand that it is a, a, a financial addition to the, to the folks there, and Oakwood isn't, but Oakwood was developed as acreages long ago, and we have no intent of, of going out and extending our, our services to them at this point. Ultimately, they could come to us with a local improvement request, and we would extend our utilities. So we're just looking at, as, as a revenue tool. You know, our, our tax rates are half of what Penhold is and almost half of what the city of Red Deer is. And, and if we don't have tools to help fund these urban type of services, it puts us in a, in a, in a difficult spot when the need comes for that, you know, the fire hall and the, the community services needs. Now, again, you know, it's, it's council's choice. Just want to be fully, fully aware that it is a revenue, it will be a significant revenue hit to us in the future because we will have people in one trailer park paying for our services, and one won't be. Thank you.
Thank you for that answer. I think we're, I think we spurred a lot of, a lot of, a lot of questions. And I'm going to continue around the same rotation. Councillor Ramsey, do you have any questions? If not, we'll continue around.
Mr. Dietrich, you mentioned one mobile home park that would be in the, the boundary area and one that wouldn't with this amendment. Can, can you clarify which one would still be in?
The, the Wascasou, oh, sorry, actually, Ms. Miller can answer. She's in the room, so I'll let her do it.
Sorry, Dave, that's okay. With respect to that, we don't have a current application for a mobile home park, but we do know that it is intended and planned for through the area structure plan. It's a Wascasou area structure plan that identifies a mobile home park in the area that is referred to as the Old Sand Pitlands, because it's just adjacent to Proform site. So we do know that there are aspirations to proceed with that development. They're actually the developer who's driving this. So they're looking to basically create the same mobile home park. They are related mobile home parks. So where Mr. Dietrich was referring to is in five, ten years from now, one will be in it and one will not.
Are we able to make comment?
You know what? I was trying to give her enough opportunity to understand first, but
Yeah, that's fine.
But I will, and, and part of, part of it was understanding before we in fact had our opportunity to make our mind up. And this is probably a unique situation because we've had a, we've had a, we've had a motion on the fly. So what I'm going to do, to be fair to everyone, I'm, we're going to take questions one time around, and then everyone will have a chance for their comments. I think that's because, because we've had a change. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Wood. I think that's a good process. So just to confirm what you said about the acreage, Oakwood Estates is an acreage subdivision, so is different to this mobile home park?
So just to confirm, it doesn't have any water or sewer, municipal water sewer extended to this area, and it hasn't been redeveloped. If they were looking to redevelop, there would be probably an ask to look at extending the water and sewer and becoming part of the hamlet. But as it sits right now, it's very rural.
And if the water and the, well, the wastewater failed in, in that acreage area, would they access municipal water and waste? Because they don't last forever, these systems. Cause they don't last forever, these systems.
Is there a question there?
Yeah.
So with respect to failure of of well water or um. The they could look at putting in a new system or they could request to extend. However, the cost of the extension would be quite high. So you would really need to make sure that the entire area was open to that to extend, it would it would be substantially high.
Okay, thank you. And my final question is, you commented that you had spoken to the owner of the mobile home park. And he was fine with this proposal.
So i- it's a family, they're they're the two mobile home parks are tied, it's the same family. And they've all been in conversation and I've been talking to the primary um. One that's looking to do the new development.
And they expressed no concern.
No concern and we did refer it out.
Thank you.
Counselor Holes, but any questions? Counselor DePalm, any questions?
Yeah, um so I guess just one question, maybe clarification, so each person in that mobile home park also got a letter. Right? And so there wasn't, from reading this report, not one person commented against this. That actually lives there, because their name is on title. Is that correct?
So everybody who's listed as an owner and is on um. Has the tax rule set up, it's all in our system, they would have received a letter. I personally put my name on that referral letter so that I would receive the calls. I did receive one call, well, two calls by the same individual twice, but it wasn't from the mobile home park. I received a call from Home Church just understanding it and they support it.
Okay, so none of the people that actually lived there sent in any comments against this in any way, shape or form? Right, okay, thanks.
So we we have a we have a motion on the floor now and we've had up good opportunity to ask our questions. Oh, you have more questions? Okay, go ahead, ask your question.
My question is this, you speak of a new mobile home park coming in, when they come in, they will benefit. From this franchise fee and the reduced cost of installing all their natural gas and whatnot. So there will be a benefit to that area. What what is the difference between the rural connection rate? And the municipal one?
So with respect to that, um yes, you're right, it will benefit. Now, we haven't, we could certainly calculate out what the difference is between um the two prior to uh second reading. Or we can table and go back and get it, but it is substantially different. And I remember when I first did the franchise agreement um a couple of years ago. Uh it was it was quite a bit, it was like thousands of dollars compared to tens of thousands of dollars. So they charge a small connection fee compared to treating you like you are rural in the middle of nowhere. That is basically how their rural costs have been um established. And the only way to change that is to be within a franchise agreement.
So it's safe to say the developer will save hundreds if not hundreds of thousands if not even into the millions. If they do a similar sized park, you know, a hundred and sixty-five lots in the Wascasou. So again. There is a substantial savings for this new park when it comes. Yeah, it's different, it's gonna be.
Questions?
My question. What is the benefit to the people in the park for paying an extra franchise fee when it's already established out? Because even if a mobile home was to move out, that's only a gas fitter. Tying into the existing meter, there's no new meters coming in.
Ms. Miller.
So I think the benefit with that would be, so our responsibility is we need to provide right of ways, which are already fairly established. In in some of the areas, the new areas, not as much, but the developer would provide those right of ways. And the gas company is required to provide the infrastructure. I would, I would think the benefit to them would be that if anything went wrong or anything, they're in that franchise agreement. Um the gas company would come, take care of everything. I don't know if they do it regardless, I I know they would take care of their infrastructure, but whether or not there'd be a cost to that. Um and certainly if council's decision is to remove it, uh by all means, that's that's uh within your control. Um we're just uh proposing a nice clean boundary and uh that was the most logical. Boundary um that we could come up with.
Thank you for that.
Okay, continuing around now, comments on the motion? Counselor Ramsey?
Yeah, um. I guess if I could sneak one more question in.
Uh go ahead.
As far as process is concerned, if if the way. Uh this is being proposed past first reading, uh that changes that AUC application. And then if for some reasons uh it changed at second reading, we'd be back at the start again, is that? What I'm understanding?
So with respect to the process for for this, so once the once first reading is granted. That bylaw needs to be sent to AUC for consideration. And part of that consideration is we have to do another advertisement in accordance with the AUC templates in our county news. And allow for another period of time for any county residents or anyone impacted to also comment. So they will have another opportunity to comment as well. Um and once we receive our AUC approval, that's when we bring it back to for second or third reading. So if we look to change something at second reading, you're correct. We would have to go back to AUC, ask for a new approval or an amended appro- approval and likely have to advertise again.
And and what if we did it the the other way where if it passed first reading as presented? And then the mobile home park got took taken out at second reading, would you still have to go through the same process?
We would, yeah, we would have to, so let's say, it's my understanding that AUC looks for those comments as well. To make sure that um there's no concerns and we would have to take it back for another first reading. Taking it out and then back to AUC again. You're correct.
Okay, in in hearing that, you know, I. I struggled with this a little bit when I seen it and and that's why I kinda asked about what services. The the folks in the mobile home park were on, because if they were all propane units, it it probably wouldn't be much impact to them. But if they they are on the gas service, then yeah, they will be paying that franchise fee for. You know, and there there's no benefit to to increase the size or anything like that, it's already a developed area, so. You know, with with that, I could I could support the amended first reading to to remove that.
Are you done, Counselor? Counselor Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Wood. Um thanks for the discussion and it's quite interesting and thanks for the report and the work on the. Presentation of the new boundary. So I I can't support this amendment, um because those of us who've been here a bit longer. Understand the huge cost that it used to be to be connected rurally and we did this. We did this for our residents, because make no mistake. If it's more expensive for the developers, they will pass it on to their customers, so. In my opinion. We all contribute and we have to be future focused at this table. We have to look, there we know there's gonna be another mobile home park, the family are planning it, I've owned it for a while too, so. It's it's just like when you build your house and you have to do the endeavor to assist, it just depends on where you're at. These this park is already here, the owner has no problem with it, he sees the benefit. And we also have to face the fact that we have big expenses. Big expenses coming that uh Assistant County Manager Dietrich has has mentioned to us. And it's gonna be a small amount, it's not fair to. Some people do it and some people don't and the thought of going back to the drawing board on this map. The work, the expense. Is I just can't support that. So I can't support the amended, I'd like to pass the bylaw first reading as presented.
So I'm just trying to figure out where where you're at and what you're saying, okay? And this is, this is what happens sometimes when we pass a motion that we say is amended, actually, the motion is the motion. The motion is the motion, the motion is 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 that. This area's been excluded, to make any changes would require amendment to the motion, to go back to original.
Thank you, Mayor Wood, for that, I did get on, because I'm quite excited about this one. So um I would move that we go back to the original uh the original motion without the amendment.
Not friendly.
How how about how about we say that you go to to as presented by staff pres- by by staff?
Thank you, I'll get it right third time, as presented by staff, do you want me to read that motion or?
So you wanna you wanna you wanna make an amendment?
I I wanna make an amendment to go back to the original motion um to the recommendation from staff.
Counselor Holes?
Okay, just so that I get this right, the amendment that's on the floor now is what administration originally presented to us, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I will speak to that one because quite frankly, I could not support the motion that was out the first time. And the reason I can't is because the whole area of Gasoline Alley is growing and expanding. And it does need down the road, fire halls, et cetera. And it, I think if we don't have this as part of our franchise fee, it's just gonna end up costing everybody a little bit more money. And in the long run, a lot more money. And as you said, the rural area that is there, they are on their own wells and their own septic system. And if they did decide to come in, that's a whole separate day. So right now, I can support as recommendation from administration that we keep Wascasou in the boundary adjustment.
Thank you, oh um. Uh I'll skip by and I'll speak, I'll speak before couns- before uh, well, actually, this one's gonna be before Counselor Moore closes. Continue on. Counselor DePalm?
So I could support the new uh the motion back on the table, the way it was originally put forward by administration. And the reason being is we have franchise fees in other places and you know, those places were also developed out. And I I get what is being said about this, but also going, looking to the future, they're gonna want a firehouse, things like that. That will bring their insurance down, a few other things out there. So I think in my opinion, if they want things going forward, you do have to go forward with some things. And the fact that not one person from that place wrote a letter or called when they all got notified. Um then that means to me that none of them had a problem with it. So um I didn't receive any phone calls about anything different, so um I will support their um. Original motion um from administration proposed by Counselor Moore.
Counselor Kenneth?
Yeah, uh I just can't see supporting this, there's no development happening in this area, it's developed. It even has fire hydrants there, it has a community center there. It's even not linked by traffic to Gasoline Alley. That's one thing they've always maintained, is they don't want the road opened to Gasoline Alley. They're a distinct neighborhood, this will not affect the rest of the development. This is no different than Okwud Estates, you know, would they benefit from a fire hall? Yeah. This is. Not gonna help affordable housing in Wascasou. This is very concerning that. To think that this will benefit them, it'll every which way, it'll be difficult for them. But it will help the next trailer park that's planned. That's not included in this. That's totally separate area. It will help that developer, they will get the benefit, they will hopefully pass on that benefit to their. Um to the people that move in there, so this is not anything unusual or strange. This is. Quite frankly, what reasonable things should be done. You know, and oh, it's gonna be a lot of work, it's gonna be changing a line on a map that hasn't been a been sent in yet, is my understanding. It's not difficult, it makes sense, this this community is separate from Gasoline Alley, the Hamlet. If you go there, they. They've have very little interaction with Gasoline Alley. Um so I I just can't see this uh being included, doesn't make sense.
Counselor Ramsey?
Hey, yeah, I I will agree, the the one thing that. You know, I kinda wondered about was that there were no letters sent in from the the folks there, but I. I still, I still can't support the amendment, I just, you know, hearing that the the park owner would would support this. I I get that, it's not, you know, it's not the cost to him for this development, it it helps him with the next development. And and it the the additional cost gets passed on to the people living there, so. Yeah, I I'm, I won't support the amendment.
Um prior to Counselor Moore closing, I'll I'll make I'll make a couple of comments. I I think the first one is to understand is, we first brought in franchise fees into this area. Everyone in that area would be in the same position that that the mobile home park would be in right now, nothing has changed. Fact, I I actually think that that the this is this is a huge, this is a huge importance, that we see this community community be whole. And and the fact is that the community isn't opposed to this, I'm not hearing people being opposed to it. And I think I think the key thing is, is that these franchise fees have a purpose. Um and and I and I and I like what's happening here and I and I like the opportunity to get to get um to get this this community. In a in a in a size that it needs to be, remembering that we were stalled out somewhat on development. And in in Gasoline Alley before we in fact became a hamlet. I'd say we were stalled up, but we were slowing down, it was creating extra costs for the developers to actually, and you know what? We're we're continuing to grow and it's a great place and people are wanting to live here and I'm not complaining. So there's no way in the world I'm uh that that I that I could support the changes made by Counselor Kenneth. I wanna go, I agree one hundred percent with Counselor Moore, we'll go straight back to the recommendations of administration, thank you, Counselor Moore.
Thanks, Mayor Wood, I will be brief, but uh you really spurred some thoughts that are, and you know. We're looking at investments in our future and growth in the future and that. And and service services that we can provide and that area is growing. Um and this is the consequence of growth, what we are doing, you know. We are encouraging growth and the more assessment we have. It's easier on all the residents of Red Deer County and and that area contributes contributes very well already. There's been no letters of concern, the owner is fine, it's not like we've heard from the people that they don't want this. And to compare Okwud Estates to the Wascasou Mobile Home Park, it is apples to oranges. Because that is an acreage acreage development. It it's it's totally different, so I um, you know, I I'm kinda urging my colleague, Counselor Kenneth, to reconsider. Because we've had no, we've had no um, we've had no complaints about this. And it it just fits in with the vision of the area, thank you.
Hey, we've all had an opportunity to speak, all those in favor of the amendment proposed by Counselor Moore? Those opposed to the amendment? So we have Counselor uh Kennedy and Counselor Ramsey opposed, the motion uh is carried. So now we're going to go back to, the amendment's been, the amendment's been passed, but we still need to pass the original motion. No, uh uh make sure I got this right, we had a we had we had a motion to make an amendment. We've only moved, we've only passed the amendment. Correct? We now need to pass, this is complicated, can I get some help from 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 administration on this, Ms. Curio, can you help me?
Thank you, Mayor Wood.
So we only passed an amendment?
Correct, you've passed Counselor Moore's amendment.
You've passed Counselor Moore's amendment to Counselor Kennett's motion. Counselor Kennett's motion was to amend the map and grant first reading. So, the motion as it stands now, as amended, is for first reading.
Thank you. So, now, so now, we need to go back to, to the motion. And all those in favor of the motion as amended. Okay, so now, we have Counselor Kennett opposed, remainder are in favor. The motion has been carried. All right. Now, what else am I missing on this one? I got to bring it back up.
There is a second resolution.
Yes, and, and to grant first reading. There we go. Okay. Any further questions on this portion? If not, Counselor Kennett, would you like to make a motion?
Am I clear that there is no public hearing on this?
That's correct. No public hearing. It is difficult to set a public hearing. There's no requirements for that because we have to wait for AUC approval prior to bringing it back for second and third reading. We are required to advertisement in accordance with a template set out by the AUC.
And what is that advertisement? Does it include letters? Oh, my question is, did you guys mail nearly 200 letters?
Yes, we did. And we did put the information with respect to the franchise fee, and we did estimate high with respect to what's existing. Now, the actual advertisement will go into the county news, and that'll be reflective of the area that's going to be included. And we'll put those, those estimates in there. And they will have opportunity to comment again.
The public will be able to comment.
That's correct.
I'm not going to do it.
Don't want to make a motion? Okay. Counselor, Counselor, anybody want to make a motion? I'll go around. Counselor, Counselor Ramsey, you want to make a motion? If not, I will take the next person. Okay. Counselor Moore.
So, I would move that we grant first reading to Bylaw 1011 slash 2025 dash A, a bylaw to amend Bylaw 2018 slash 35 to increase the franchise agreement municipal service area as per Schedule A of this report. This is future focused, good planning, that everybody in that area will benefit, whether it's schooling, protective services, and everything else municipally that is provided. Thank you.
Comments, Counselor Holsman?
No, I totally support this. It goes hand in hand with what we just discussed for all of that area in Gasoline Alley, to work together as a community.
Okay. Counselor, Counselor DePalm, Counselor Kennett.
Yeah, unfortunately, I can't support it. It, it doesn't make sense. It's adding in people that are going to get no benefit, even with fire and whatnot. If you talk to the residents there, you know, it's, it's all senior living. It's not, it's not young families. So, can't support it.
Counselor Ramsey, you want to speak? Okay. So, was your motion? I'll, I'll say what I want to say first, then before, before you close. I guess one of the key things that, that I want to point out, that these franchise fees benefit the community, and that's what they're collected for. I, I also want to point out, and it's been pointed out earlier today, but I, I think it's important that we don't lose sight of it, that Red Deer County is a very economical place to live. Red Deer County has one of the lowest tax rates of this region, and that Red Deer County provides great services to our, to our residents. And these franchise fees help us plan for future things that we may need to provide for these communities, and that they are done not just in Red Deer County, but everywhere else in, in our province that chooses to do so. And to include this new area, I think is extremely important. And to send, so, I'm fully in support of your motion, Counselor Moore. You would like to close?
Thank you, Mayor Wood. I just, I'd just like to say that this is an investment in our future. And every, every penny that goes into the franchise fee will come back to improve the area. And that's our job to look to the future and improve the, the very, the, the area, the county that we have. So, that's all I have to say.
We've all had an opportunity. All those in favor, first reading. Opposed, first reading. Counselor Kennett, Counselor Ramsey opposed. Motion has been carried. Just going to make myself a note here. Okay, continuing on to the next item on, does everyone need a break? Okay, let's, let's have a break. Sorry, Mr. McIntosh, but we're going to have a break. We're going to come back at 10:30. Is 10:30 close enough for you?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Called Red Deer County Council back door. The time is 10:33. The next item on our agenda is item number 5.3. Agricultural Service Board roadside grazing. And it's good to see you here today, Mr. McIntosh. How are you?
I'm doing well. Good morning to Mayor and Council. Thanks for having me in. The purpose of my report today is for Council to hear requests from the Agriculture Service Board to enact grazing and roadside right-of-ways, enact our program for 2025. On May 15th, 2025, the Agricultural Service Board passed the following resolution. Moved by a amateur that the Agricultural Service Board requests that county council enact roadside grazing program for 2025 to address the potential upcoming drought conditions. Red Deer County Council, Council Policy Number 7.003, Grazing and Road Right-of-Ways states that county council may adopt a resolution authorizing livestock grazing in the ditch portion of a road right-of-way due to severe drought conditions. This program is not permanent, as council must approve a motion enacting it before roadside, the roadside grazing program is available in that year. There is an administrative procedure which governs the processing of requests for grazing in roadside right-of-ways, and these documents aim to address concerns regarding municipal risk due to livestock grazing. Thanks to recent moisture, the majority of Alberta is currently at drought stage zero or one out of five total stages. However, Red Deer, the Red Deer area, the Little Red Deer River, the Medicine River, the Middle Red Deer River, and the Red Deer River below the city of Red Deer and Three Hills Creek are still under a low-flow advisory. Soil moisture reserves are increasing. However, areas west of Highway 2 are still considered low to moderately low relative to long-term normal moisture to a depth of 120 centimeters. Red Deer County has authorized grazing and roadside right-of-way program in the last three of four years. When the program was enacted by council in August of 2023, Red Deer County received 10 general inquiries. We provided four agreements, but we saw only one completed agreement in place for the 23, 2023 season. The 2024 program was approved in council of April, by council in April of last year. Despite the earlier program announcements, administration received less than five program inquiries, and again, only one agreement was completed last season. Administration has not yet received any requests from producers seeking to graze roadsides at this time, but grazing won't begin until later in June and July, once we have seen adequate vegetation growth. As far as implement, implications, permitting roadside grazing exposes the local authority to a certain amount of liability. Red Deer County requires the requestee to complete a license-to-occupy agreement and supply proof of general liability insurance of no less than $5 million, with Red Deer County named as co-insured for this reason. A communications plan, we would follow the regular channels about the meeting minutes that are shared online, but should council permit grazing and roadside right-of-ways for 2025, additional advertising will be done to communicate this program to residents. As we see it, the alternatives would be to authorize for council to, A, authorize livestock grazing in the ditch portion of roadside right-of-way in 2025 due to drought conditions, and in compliance with Policy Number 7.003, grazing and roadside right-of-ways. Alternative B would be to refer this matter back to Agricultural Services Board, identifying additional information that may be required by council. Alternative C would be deny livestock grazing in the ditch portion of a road right-of-way for 2025. Recommendation from staff is to authorize livestock grazing in the ditch portion in a roadside right-of-way in 2025 due to dry conditions in compliance with Policy 7.003, grazing and roadside right-of-way. I'll leave it there and take any questions?
Thank you for your report. We'll take questions. We'll actually go the other way around this time. Counselor Holsman, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any question.
Counselor Moore.
Thanks, Mayor Wood. Thanks for the report, Mr. McIntosh. So, I think this is a great program, but historically, we haven't had a big uptake. Why do you think that is?
Yeah, through the chair and to reply to the question, there is an administrative process to permit the grazing in these roadsides. The insurance requirement being at $5 million is quite high, which I do, I have heard is a barrier to some. There are also requirements that the fence is installed, that animals- There are also requirements that the fence is installed, that animals are moved. Only grazing is only permitted in daylight hours and they have to be outside, so there are requirements, and it doesn't fit all of our roadside applications. You have to be adjacent to that roadside to make it work. If your livestock are a little bit harder to manage, it's logistics of getting them in and out of there are a little bit more challenging. But we did put these restrictions in place to reduce as much liability as we could, because any kind of incident on a roadside with livestock, the county could be partially liable.
I beg your pardon, is it, is there a way to make it less onerous, so obviously we have to cover our liability?
We did look at all options when we were developing this program, and we set, we chose to create the procedures as they are to keep our liability at a minimum level, so making changes would open us up to more risk, and that's why we created the procedure to back us up. So we were following the recommended action and keeping our risk as low as we could.
Any questions, Counselor Kennett?
You said last year that there was five inquiries, and then only one application. But how much, how long of a roadway was that one application for, was it for like three or four miles worth, or was it half a mile?
Yeah, this location, I know it quite well, it's the application we get every year. This individual has been grazing the roadside for years, and now that we permit it, they follow the permit process, but it is only a quarter section, it's only half a mile. It's part of their rotation, moving from one pasture to another, they clean up the ditch, so they're quite familiar with the process and accept the, the conditions of the agreement.
Right. The other question for you, if we didn't enact it today, what kind of timeline, like right now, we, we got a little reprieve with some rains, but if we get into the hot, dry summer and we don't get any more rains, what kind of timeline would it take if all of a sudden we had a flood of inquiries to do this?
To, through the chair in answering that, really as quick as getting it in front of Council again to, you know, administratively, we could deliver the service, you know, we could start taking applications tomorrow, once approved, and then it takes maybe a couple of days to review the site and complete the paperwork, so that wouldn't take long. It would really just be getting it, getting a report in front of Council again to approve the...
So depending on timing, it could be like three weeks or something?
Yeah, at a maximum, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Counselor DePalm? Okay, Counselor Ramsey, would you like to make a motion?
Thank you, Mayor Wood. Yeah, I would, I would certainly move that we authorize the livestock grazing and road right-of-ways for two thousand and twenty-five in compliance with Policy seven point zero zero three. Drought is obviously still a big topic, especially with the ASB. And in the last couple of years, they've tried to look at this a little bit more proactively and, and do this ahead of time as opposed to waiting until a request comes in and then kind of reacting to that situation, so you know, even, even though things aren't too bad right now, it, it, you know, if we don't, if the moisture doesn't keep up, we could be in a similar situation to last year, so I don't think there's any harm in, in doing this now, and you know, it has, has been a little bit underutilized, but if, if conditions continue to be dry, I, I think the uptake will increase, so.
Counselor Moore?
So I would support Counselor Ramsey's motion, and I think it, there's, there's definitely benefit to being proactive as a part, as opposed to reactive, and hopefully, we're going to get, you know, much more rain this year, but who knows, and I think we need to set up our producers, those who can do this, that we set them up for success and, and work with them, so I, I totally support this.
Counselor Holsman?
I totally support this, I, I like the fact that we've got a process for this, because in the past, I have had to put notices of motion forward when I was on Ag Service Board, and I think it's better to be proactive with this. I've already had calls about it this year, so that's a good thing, and I said it was coming before Council today, so I think when we take a look at where the moisture is going, and County Mountain View's always got, already got fire bans on, so even though we had some moisture, that drought is still out there, so I think this is best to be proactive.
Thank you, Counselor DePalm?
Yeah, I'll totally support it, and I do agree that, you know, it, it kind of all depends on where you live and what, who can access it, and that kind of thing, but I do also agree with, you know, there has to be rules in how to do it, because, you know, I have seen cows out on the road, and, and, you know, in the dark, a black cow is non-visible, and, yeah. So I do agree with everything, and I think it's great that, you know, we have it, and we'll see who takes advantage of it.
Counselor Kennett?
Yeah, as has been stated before, you know, this doesn't mean there's going to be a rush, and there's still a process that people have to do, and standards that they have to meet, and insurance and whatnot, but I think it's good we have it ready to go, because I'd hate to have a farmer who's run out of feed for his cattle have to wait three weeks or more when he could come in and get through the permitting process and quickly get a fence up and save having to sell off his herd, for example, or a portion thereof. So I think this is very proactive, we are not flush with water, that's for sure. Anybody that looks, digs down in the soil, there's, there's some there, but it's, it's not where we need to be, and we've got multiple years of drought stacking up on this water reserve, which is evaporated, to add the pun to it, so I think this is a good move on our behalf, and yeah, just because it's there doesn't mean we're going to have a flood of people taking it, but people who see a benefit and have a need, it's there and ready to go, thank you.
And before you close, I'll just make a couple of comments, I'm going to support the motion. I, I think it's, I think it's extremely important, and, and I, we brought this forward because, you know, at times, farmers can be in dire straits, you know, they need, they need some way to feed those cattle. The program is, is honestly pretty onerous on, on a, on a landowner, and especially, you know, remembering that they're only getting a small portion of, of land for a lot, a lot of work, and to try to put a fence up and, and maintain it, and cattle in and out. I, I can understand why we have the uptake that we have, but on the other hand, we have a process, and those that we can help will help, and, and I appreciate administration, you know, getting to this, this point on it. I agree with the other comments, you know, we've had a bit of rain this last while, but if the wind starts to blow and, and the, and we don't get rain, I mean, it, it dries up really, really fast, and, and we were not flush coming into this year, we're, we're actually pretty dry. And on my own farm, we, we planted pertinent every slue. I haven't seen that for a long, long time. And so, in fact, I've actually, in fifty-two years, I've actually planted some slues I've never planted before. So water is also going to be a concern to some of this pasture land, and not just, not just, not just this, and you know what? And maybe, maybe some of these, maybe some of these ditches might even have, I don't know. Any, any help we can, any help we can, we will. Counselor Ramsey, you'd like to close? Always in favor, as carried unanimously, thank you. Thank you, Mr. McIntosh. Continuing on now to development applications and reports, item number six point one, Southeast of sixteen thirty, thirty-nine, twenty-seven, four, off-site levies, good morning, Ms. Joint.
Good morning, Council. This is to consider deferring the off-site levies that are owing on the Southeast sixteen thirty-nine, twenty-seven, west of the fourth, for a recently approved accessory building and garden suite. On May twelfth of this year, the Development Authority approved the development permit to construct a hundred ninety-one point seven-five square meter accessory building with a garden suite on part of the Southeast sixteen thirty-nine, twenty-seven, west of the fourth. The subject sixty-one point five hectare parcel is located one point five kilometers north of the city of Red Deer. The parcel is accessed from Township Road three ninety-two, and the parcel is zoned agricultural district. The development permit application and owner of the parcel, parcel of land is requesting for an off-site levy to be deferred, and the applicant has included a letter with the request. As a condition of development, the applicant is required to pay the Central Park off-site levy and transportation contribution. The Central Park off-site levy and transportation contribution states the following, defines development, the building or addition to and, or replacement or repair of a building, and the construction and replacing of any of them in, on, over, or under the land. It also states the development area shall mean and include the total gross area of all of the lands within the boundaries of the area proposed to be developed, without deduction of any kind of lands required to be dedicated for highway or for municipal school or environmental reserves. It also states that Council, Red Deer County, may at its sole discretion vary all or any portion of the levy and to, and/or contributions required to be paid pursuant to the terms of this bylaw. The off-site levy owing for the subject parcel is eight hundred and nineteen thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars and eighty cents. The applicant is requesting that the off-site levy be deferred to, be deferred due to the scale of the development. This bylaw was established in two thousand and one. More recently, but, more recent bylaws include the payment of, exclude, sorry, exclude the payment of off-site levies on accessory buildings and and proposed development where the development is considered mi-, minor improvement. The construction of the accessory building and a garden suite could be considered a minor, minor improvement. There have been times when a large parcel similar to this one, Council has approved administration to collect on three acres of residential assessed land and deferred on the remainder. If Council direction, if Council's direction is to collect on the three acres, the amount owing on the off-site levy would be sixteen thousand, eighty-six dollars. Staff recommendation is to grant approval to defer the payment for the off-site levies as per four point zero A, thank you.
Thank you for your report, are there any questions? We'll start with Counselor Ramsey this time, Counselor Kennett?
Thank you. If, if we did grant the deferral, and later the applicant was to sell this parcel, would all the levies be due at that time then?
Ms. Joint?
Through the Assistant CAO to Council, that is correct, the new owner, no.
Ms. Moore?
No, sorry.
I, I think she was on to the right, but the new owner would have to pay those, but not due to the sale.
No.
So they can sell it ten times, and we don't, it doesn't matter to us. It's when a subdivision or a development occurs, we can collect as a condition of approval.
Okay, okay, so the sale wouldn't trigger the levies, okay, thank you.
Counselor DePalm, Counselor Holsman?
That was going to be my question, if we defer and they decide to build something bigger, then we could get off-site on that portion, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Counselor Moore?
So I'm just gonna, I'm gonna make the motion and then say a few things. I move that we grant approval to defer payment of the off-site levy, levies as per four point zero A. You know, that, that, this is not going to be, it's minor, as been stated, we've done this several times before, and of course, is, if there's further subdivision, the levies come into play, so that's my rationale for this, thank you. Just one more thing, I'd like to acknowledge the letter from Mr. and Mrs. Kluckist for taking the time to, to write to Council, thank you.
Discussion, anybody have discussion? This is, this is something we've always, we've always deferred these, the majority of the times, that made sense in the similar circumstances. I want to see this development take place, let's see growth happen. Go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor Wood, and you know, just commenting on the garden suite, you know, this is a really great, it's a great initiative from Red Deer County, because it does allow people to age in place or bring family home, so in an affordable way. So yeah, that's all I have to say.
Always in favor, carried unanimously. Continuing on to item number six point two. Mr. Mohe, how are you today?
Very well, thank you very much for asking. Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is to consider granting first reading to Bylaw number one zero zero two slash two thousand and twenty-five dash E, a bylaw to redesignate approximately one and a half acres, or one point five five hectare, sorry, a portion of the Northwest eight, the thirty-six, twenty-seven, west of the fourth, from Agricultural District to Public Service District, and set up the hearing date for July twenty-second. Okay, so the intent of the application was to redesignate the said parcel where the Antler Hill Community Center is located, from Ag to PS, to reflect the current land use. The Antler Hill Community Association would like to erect a freestanding sign, as you can see on the drawings there on to your right, to inform the public of the events happening at the hall. Freestanding signs neither permitted nor discretion there in the Ag District, therefore, re-designation, or re-designating the land to a land use that is more appropriate, and also allows for freestanding signs being requested. County Land Use Bylaw defines freestanding sign as an advertising sign that is supported independently of a building wall or structure, but does not include a temporary sign. County Land Use Bylaw, Section one twenty-two point one, Public Service District states that a land use that is intended to provide for uses and facilities used by the public, and District allows for community facility and freestanding sign, which are both listed as permitted uses. Next slide. Subject land is located approximately one and a half kilometers east of QE two, and one point three kilometers west of Harvey seven ninety-one. It is adjacent south of Township Road three sixty-two and east of Rynchford two seventy-five. Subject and surrounding lands within the nine-quarter sections are zoned agricultural district. Okay, before I go to the recommendation, communication plan for this is to advertise in the county website, refer to internal and external stakeholders, as well as the landowners, and also put in the county news. So recommendation from staff is to grant first reading as per alternatives for A, as you can see on the slide, thank you.
Thank you for your report, Mr. Mohe, are there any questions, Counselor, Counselor Holsman, Counselor Moore, Counselor Ramsey, Kennett? Counselor DePalm, you're...
So I don't have any questions, so I'll just move the, I would move that we grant first reading to Bylaw one zero zero two slash two zero twenty-five E, to amend Bylaw number two thousand and twenty-two slash twenty-six, land use bylaw to redesignate approximately three point four acres, portion of Northwest eighty-six, thirty-seven, twenty-four, from Ag District to Public Service, and set the public hearing date for July twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five. And I guess just my comment, this makes more sense than that being as Ag, so they, you know, it's, then it's actually the use that is intended, because there's a community hall there, so that's all I have to say.
Need discussion, always in favor, carried unanimously, thank you. Okay, going down to the next item, item number eight point one, notice of motion from Counselor Moore. I'm looking for, I'm looking for motion to go into closed session, Counselor, Counselor Kennett? Motion from Counselor Kennett, you did make motion, sir?
Yeah, sorry, in camera for ten fifty-eight.
Always in favor?
I would.
Hang on, what, discussion?
Yeah, I just have a comment, I just, because this is unusual, what we're doing here, because normally, our notices of motion we make in the public, I just have a little statement I want to say, if that's okay.
Administration would not advise for any public statements to be made on this matter at this time. We would like council to defer that till June twenty-seventeenth, when this matter is considered. Thank you.
I think we need to be very careful.
I'm not going to say anything that's illegal. Do I have the right to say something, Samantha? It's not going to allude to what we're going to talk about?
I believe that council should consider that in a, in a closed session, as you may want to receive legal advice prior to making any comments of any kind.
At this point in time, I, I'm looking for, I'm just, I just want to call a question. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. Thank you. Over discussions in a minute. That's going to be carried unanimously and folks, I'm still seating and I'm so far behind, I think I'm first. Counselor, Counselor Ramsey, would you mind sharing the next meeting? Because I'm, I'm actually, I'm actually feel that I. I actually had a, I had another crazy breakdown yesterday. Would you guys believe that I picked up a cat truck?